Some water and appreciate if you want some cold water.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, we can try to get the whole, the whole room. Okay, so we've got just Grace's iPad and we're live now, ladies and gentlemen.
It's right where the old taxidermy place.
On the same side of your office.
Oh, I thought it was called the Wink. And there's a huge. The white. Oh, so it's like the white.
Wait a second, he's wrong.
Three markets.
Right next to that. It was a little cabin. They pour everything out except like grease Murphy.
Oh, it's good. Yeah, yeah, it's a whole bunch of. Eric, are we good?
We are ready to.
All right, late watch this, ready, Dan? It's six thirty-six, gentlemen, in Reed Field, Maine, uh, and we are here for the. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation of God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Hello, there, hello there, if you are watching us live on Zoom, uh, beaming into your homes, we are at the Reed Field Fire Department. And we are here for our meeting this afternoon, or this evening, I should say, um, and we have, uh, five minutes for, uh, the next item, uh, which is twenty-two zero nine three, the minutes from our last meeting, January tenth. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January tenth.
Second, they have been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the January tenth meeting. Um, there we go, all in favor of approving the minutes? Thank you very much, um, very well, we have, uh, uh, we move to item twenty-two zero nine four, warrants twenty-nine through thirty-two.
We have in here, I want to review and find them after you. The first, the first two are all set, those are the ones that we wanted to do. Um, it's the last two that we, uh, heard of.
I totally forgot.
Yeah, twenty-nine, if you wanna take a look.
Those are this place?
Those are, those are two weeks ago, these are the ones that are just hot.
Yeah, so this is thirty-one, thirty-six, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one. Eric?
Oh, I mean, so, um, uh, in the past, what we've done in terms of boards, we've even, after the time after, after the replacement.
Let's come back to this.
Yep.
That's not.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Um, so, but twenty-nine and thirty, we've already accepted, yes? Everyone has. Okay, so then I will make a motion, uh, then to accept, um, warrants twenty-nine and thirty in the amount of seventy-two thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-three cents.
All right.
Okay, uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve, uh, those, uh, warrants twenty-nine and thirty, um, which is again, we've already signed for these. All in favor for these warrants?
Sure. Um, the payment to Anderson Bank for eleven thousand, one eighty-five, is that the backhoe loan at Anderson?
We double check. I have that right here. Uh, let's see. Uh, that is the backhoe, yes.
Okay, that was the only large item there, I'm happy now.
Yes, indeed, no worries, yes, absolutely, I just wanna move this. Very good, uh, it's been moved and seconded to all the discussion, all in favor of the warrant? Thank you very much, now warrants thirty-one and thirty-two are ready.
Literally come back for that? And like, yeah.
See even whether.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll wait for a minute, so, yeah, I don't wanna do that.
No worries, uh, we move on to communications for twenty minutes, we have select board communication. Uh, this is the time any member of the select board may address the. All right.
So, there is something on my comment, but it's, um, one of the committee reports, does that wait till then?
Uh, yeah. All right.
Eric, can you give me an update on the sidewalk? Snow clearing, um, yesterday and today?
Yeah, so, uh, we had, uh, helped out on Sunday, clearing like everybody else was. Uh, they were able to, um, take their transfer station, town office and other areas. We did, uh, did about three quarters of the way down the sidewalk and then they had a linkage issue on the, uh, the snow thrower, so the thing that the chute had angles, um, that, that came apart, so they had to have a repair and we're waiting on that repair to be finished and they can finish the sidewalks.
That's just what it looked like driving by.
Yeah, yeah, like, like, like something happened right there.
Sunday, people can be out here and, oh, wait, it all ended.
Yeah, no, it was pretty, uh, pretty catastrophic, uh, when they weren't able to finish it, they really wanted to, um, and, uh, but we had to wait for all of each part, so.
And I observed somebody following up at the fairgrounds today, who was doing fabulous job. Don't know which person it was, but it doesn't matter, it was really nicely done.
Good. You know, whether they have their picks that we did ourselves, or is this like a service call? I don't know the exact status, but we need to prove written on it this afternoon. We can probably tell from what we catch.
Um, excellent, uh, the next item, uh, is number one on select board communications, we'll move on to boards, committees, commissions and departments. We have ten minutes aside to do this, we have in the packet, uh, minutes from the board of the heels from October twenty-eighth, library minutes from November third, cemetery committee minutes of November fifteenth, and a comprehensive plan committee update. Um, if you wanted to say something, Carol, about any of those minutes from the boards, committees, commissions and departments?
Um, I wanted to talk about the appeals board hearing. Um, at the time when I was reading it, it was noise, it was from three months ago. And the question was, has anything transpired since then, and I guess not. But the whole thing, I was very troubled reading it, um, this is a twenty-year property owner in a house that's coursing deep from the water, he wants to set it back. Uh, I guess it's been going on for a year and a half, and I can't read it, it's on, I apologize, um. And it went to the Board of Appeals instead of the Planning Board, and I'm not sure how or why that happened, because even some members of the appeals board objected that it went to them instead of the planning board.
Uh, it went at the request of, yeah, so.
Have you requested the applicant?
Absolutely.
Wow.
Yes.
Didn't sound that way from the minute.
It didn't?
Yeah, no, it was, um, they, um, they basically, I don't want, um, paraphrase too much, but they chose to, uh, end their planning board process and try to, to try their hand with the appeals board.
Okay.
But if I read those minutes currently, pardon me.
Please, yes or no?
They, they will at some point be dealing with the planning. They're, they're back there now, um, so they, they, um, I, I don't want to put this in later, but they didn't like the answer they got from the planning board, so they quit and went and took their case to the appeals board, who said, um, this is a, a difficult one and it was, and I voted no. Um, but, uh, in the end, uh, they ended up going back to the planning board and they're now working through that process now.
So that's where we are with that?
That's where we are, yes. And if I made it, uh, this may seem like a protracted process, but that's how land use works because state statute, in a lot of cases, is ambiguous and there's a lot of discretion in terms of the interaction between the various land use boards and individual municipalities, so while it may seem arduous, um, the applicant may have the choice to do this, so, uh, I, I would. And I, I'm not, I'm not a member of either one of those boards, but I do believe that the process in terms of fairness to the applicant and timing of, has been judicious.
Um, I, I would just, I, I just wanna state for the, for, for my part, every one of these minutes is from at least October or November, and so I just wanna say, it speaks to some of the issues that we have hashed out here in terms of, I read this too and I was amazed at, having seen it, but then I went back and I realized it's from October. So it was, it was a little bit like, you know, I, I think it just continues that same, um, enforcement and, and consistency of the, the getting's, you know, information out, it's in, go ahead, Ralph.
To my point at the last select board meeting, uh, and this is why I have a problem with agendas only. They just set the table, they don't say what was served. And timing for filing of minutes, especially this kind of thing, needs to be done in a timely fashion, and from my understanding, before we redid the protocol, and that was what we were going to do. We did not. So everybody should understand that timely filing of draft minutes is not on the table anymore. But this tells me, at least as a member of the public, not a member of the select board, that this needs to be addressed and those draft minutes need to be out there in a timely fashion so people can read them. The agendas do not tell you what happened and who voted for what.
And I would say that after, when these meetings happen, we hadn't really finalized any of the stuff from boards, committees, commissions, um, you know, handling, so I would make sure.
Understanding that that document is now finalized.
It is, absolutely.
Okay, I think that's the time frame in which.
Yeah, yeah, right, and so I think now, I think most of the boards, committees and commissions know that this is timely filing of minutes is something we are stressing. Right?
That's what we say.
Absolutely.
I'd just furthermore say, um, this is just another of several I've heard of, of existing property owners, like long-term property owners. The process goes on a year and a half, a year like this, no, come back with this, no, come back with that. There's so much here that's positive, it's disturbing that, um, you know, you have to live here before we can grant this, he's trying to move here, he wants a year-round property, he now wants to add a garage, he wants to add a workshop. He's six foot eight and there's a spiral staircase and it's like, it's just, I, the town has already an anti-business persona, and I just have keep hearing and I've witnessed some very, um, uncomfortable hearing, um, I just, it's, we're just not a friendly village, the way that we're treating long-term property owners that are just trying to improve their small property, he's letting it back from the water, not putting it forward. I just, there's, he, he's at a dead end, and I've heard he's already decided. Forget it. I'm coming to help him very well.
Please.
Um, I think we need to be really mindful as a best that each city and town have a charge and mission and that I believe they all work very hard to do right by those charges and missions. Um, if it was the property owner's decision to take it, count the planning board, the appeals board, um, the town really can't be faulted for that taking place and then holding things up on because they chose to do it out of order, and really what I read out of that was a lot of the frustration that you're feeling, but I don't think it's because the town has any sort of negative feeling towards things happening, what we have in the center rule in the land use ordinance, and we're telling people that you have to follow them. And he has a lot of, the property owner has a lot of very strong points, and I know that some of the things you just approved in our last town meeting were specifically to move properties farther from the lake, even if it encroaches on the road, and I, I don't think that's where the issue lies. Um, I really felt in reading this, if the appeals board felt that it wasn't their position to be able to make a statement because they're supposed to be, were appealing something the planning board had done, well, the planning board didn't do anything because they were by town. Um, so my hope is that when those planning boards, the planning board will apply to less threat we, we have. Um, and I, I think that a appeals board seemed to think that there was certainly a way around the revenue issue. Um, you know, putting in a, within a year, or when the house is ready to be occupied, it will be missed. Um, you know, something to that effect, so, um, I, I just, I feel for everybody, it's a difficult situation, but, um, and I don't think it's our place to second yes, I think it is our place to ask questions and, um, ask the third question.
Ralph?
Both land use boards are in a difficult position because all of our regulations are directed by state statute. And they are not clearly understandable, there are ambiguities all over the place, and that's what basically prompted this give and take between the two boards to begin with. I think that the town, uh, not the town, I think these two boards are, are making a good paid effort, but when you end up with non-conforming laws in waterfront areas where you have longstanding histories that don't conform, this is the norm, and this is what it takes to wade through them and make the decisions based on what state statute allows. So while it's frustrating, while it's expensive for the landowner, again, the, the second happens, uh, as a select board, I don't wanna be second guessing veteran land use boards, uh, who are doing their best, and I certainly don't wanna, at least as an individual board member here, be perceived as being in a position where I'm undermining their process. And the town supports them with legal backing, and we support the boards that are doing their level best to deal with these very, very challenging positions, they go back death. So while it's frustrating, uh, my biggest beef is minutes should have been out there two weeks after it happened.
Um.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, um, for a reconsideration, not tonight, but when I asked by the planning board has a five-year term of minimum, so, but a US House of Representatives has a two-year term. I am going to go in reference, and I'm going to ask that we review that the planning board has a three-year term, like everybody else in town. It's not that complex, it's complex, and if you're new, you ask all the questions you want, but I don't think five years is appropriate for a small town. Okay, so I'm just gonna put that out there, doesn't need to be discussed tonight because we've got a big agenda, but I think it's, five years is, is not appropriate when everything else is.
I'll quickly join her, Mr. Chairman.
Make it fast.
I disagree because there's a steep learning curve and you want decent transitions with people that are knowledgeable and have experience.
I'd like it to come for a discussion and then go at another time.
Sure, if that's, if that's something that the board has.
That would be a warrant question, wouldn't it? Uh, I'd have to look at some, um, whether it's the state room or whether it's all, I don't know.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, though, it's noted in the minutes. Uh, if there's nothing else on these, uh, reports, uh, then we move to public communication, uh, five minutes, if anyone at home, I don't know if there's anybody zooming, you may speak for.
If you just have Grace's iPad.
Grace, hi Grace, thank you.
I do wanna find out, we have, uh, John Fitman here, who is our newest, yes, employee, she is our new collection.
Do you guys know where you feel best?
Yeah, yeah, shall we take a minute, um, not this time, uh, but going forward, if you wanna have her come in, or, or willing to introduce herself and, uh, just move away. This looks very unusual. That word is here, so we got, uh, we got, uh, town office, so.
All right.
Hi, the packet.
Yeah, um, so if there's no public, for public communication, we move to, uh, item twenty-two zero nine five. Consider the reappointment of Warren Norris to the cemetery committee. Warren, uh, Mr. Norris, I should say, his, uh, um, application within the packet, this is a reappointment, so he does not have to be here. Uh, and I would entertain a motion to nominate Mr. Norris.
Oh, nominate Warren Norris for a reappointment to the cemetery committee for a period of
Three years.
Now, ending, starting tonight and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. One off the committee.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to accept Warren Norris to the cemetery committee, uh, for a period, uh, beginning tonight and ending six thirty twenty-four. Warren, is there any further to study? All in favor? Thank you very much, uh, we move on to our next item, which is, uh, new business, we have, uh, some time for that as we are, we're caught up, uh, with everything. Tonight, just to give folks, if you are at home, we are at home to conduct a review of the fire station and the new apparatus bay. The fire department got called out on a mutual aid call, so in fact, we are waiting for Chief May, uh, to come back. Um, and then we will, uh, this evening, hold a tabletop exercise and discussion, uh, so that we can review the emergency operation plan. So, uh, that is our agenda.
And may I ask, if they don't return by the time we're done hooking around, will we just postpone and do some other things?
I, I defer to Eric on that because of the planning aspect, I'm gonna head up into the stuff.
Yeah, I think it'd be really important to have you here.
It might just say.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr..
Uh, you have the warrant.
Oh, yes, uh, Carol was going over, right?
I also read it.
It's all just winter, right? Expect this pretty much only.
Yeah, you also called that.
I'll court it.
Um.
Oh, yeah, what about that?
Yeah, that's actually a good question.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
One sixteen, I think it was. And we were asked to, that they made two people only to show up in person and others to use.
I a hundred percent object to that, anybody that has a substantial position in voting for the school budget should be in attendance, I don't know why they're limiting it to um, most school hearings are in the, um, top area of the high school, less ring to spread out, COVID is not an acceptable reason for us to only have two members. I think it's important that every one of us be there and every one of the school board have an, in their discussion, it's just, it's not the same. So I a hundred percent disagree with limiting it to anybody who wants to be there or something to that.
I know last year, I believe we were all on. But one year we were all on.
I think that was last year.
And another year we were there.
A year before we were.
I don't really care either way, I'll speak up whenever I want, even more not.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's very important that people attend, I think whichever way.
It's the biggest two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars every one. The limit, the discussion or the people attendance is at COVID, I think. We, we all have ways to be safe, public distance masks, whatever they want, but I think it's essential that they open the door to more, to the central.
Did you bring that up?
I did not, I can call, uh, data normally.
Because that's, that's, if that's their policy, I'd, like I said, I don't mind being on Zoom, I mean, like, if something smells fishy, I'll bring it up.
Yeah, I, maybe I misunderstood the memo, but I thought they were talking about public officials limiting to in presence, and I didn't see anything that specifically talked about the general public being allowed to present. Is it, am I, did I read it wrong?
No, they were talking about.
Okay.
So.
Yes, and. So the general public.
Hopefully move, so, in an effort to keep the, yes, and in an effort to keep the number of people at the meeting at a safe level, we are asking that each town send no more than two representatives, other members are welcome to attend to the. Yeah, go for it, and if they, you know, I don't mind if you wanna go in person or somebody else would go in person, but I'll probably.
So we'll get to that now. Person, I care a lot.
Yeah, Carol.
Uh, and then, um.
I can't.
We can figure out if you're going in first. Uh, I think somebody who turns around a bit longer or three months, but someone else can do it, I would, most certainly. Because you know my feelings, uh, from the.
I'm happy to go or not.
I would, I would defer to you, obviously.
I don't need to go, I'm, I'm happy to go. Like you go, I'm happy.
I have a good one. I'll go check out the, uh, the chairs that I gave to my daughter.
Well, and generally, ten, and all of that on the. It would be exciting if all the towns actually showed up this year.
Then you're working, yeah, I have enough to do with one for a lot of.
Some towns don't.
I've been, I'm sitting pretty next to like, or for something else, I've been calling for, uh, if you know, uh, um, Manchester usually won or won, and, uh, as we're having from, uh, well, if this means a more challenging.
I've never seen a Bamschel store done in a fair hall here. Is this a normal, uh, notice, advance notice? Yes. I think that is. Um, we've known, it's been on our budget schedule, Eric, this one, yeah.
It's the mid, we put it on there in mid-March, we, we put a question mark, votes somewhere in the period. Um, we tried to give some notice, but, uh, I didn't school have, that's a problem.
Now.
Probably, I don't know, however many years Eric is, is out, I'm always doing that, but most of it's, so, just that they're telling. And more days.
Yeah.
Yeah, not everyone, that's true.
Mark, Marty, Mark.
But anyway, to my point.
Or is that maybe you could make it?
I think I can.
I think it's like, you did.
I can, Ralph?
Oh, let me know.
I will.
I'll be the opener, or you'll be the opener, one way.
I forget that it's not a doing yet.
It's only tomorrow.
Uh, but anyway, this is a kind of situation, most of the boards, these adult spots directly to their town, where they go and meet at each individual. Uh, select board, but. So the towns don't ever have a chance to have this open forum. And basically, it's just so you can hear what each other has to say, um, it's too bad in our district we have a fracture that Manchester doesn't like. That's why Derek did it in another cell. Um, so are we ready to do our?
Yeah, let's walk through.
Eric, or you?
Oh, she's all, uh. Yeah, let's finish this off.
Um, I can do the first part of the tour, Mike, okay, I don't have the lights on, let me get out there. Don't know much about that, I know a little bit of.
All right, so we'll go, uh.
You know, way too much.
Uh, we'll go to Carol for warrants thirty-one and thirty-two, Carol.
Warrant thirty-one is in a month of three hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine states. Um, this state is, um, seven eighty-nine fifty and two thousand, forty-nine seventy-five. Um, there's really nothing outstanding, it seems like a lot of winter expenses, salt, and, um, those are the big ticket items that I noticed. Um, this looks like it's general expenditure, nothing outstanding that I can see happening. Um, so, can I put that, uh, approval, we do them separate, we do, right? Thirty-one, and then thirty all together, oh, okay, and then warrant thirty-two is zero, twenty thousand, three dollars and twenty-two cents. The total sum of both warrants is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two. I'll move that.
Second, it moved and seconded to approve, uh, that warrants thirty-one and thirty-two.
I'd like to make one note, there was a two-thousand-dollar payment, um, to the Western Kennebec. There was a two thousand dollar payment, um, to the Western Kennebec Lake, Ethan, Broadband Station. Something like that, I should know.
W A L C.
I mean, that is for, um, a joint, um, topographical evaluation, these are by Red Bull. So through their provider, Taranis, it's going to give us a topographical map showing us. If they put the towers where they are proposing on cell, cell or communication towers that already exist, that they would be able to reach each location in Redfield. Um, or not, and where it would need to have a repeater to reach that location. Um, and that will give us, all the towns are going through and doing that, so it's two thousand dollars each for a total of ten thousand dollars. They had, have already done that separately at that time. Um, and that'll just give us the left piece of the puzzle to use in hooking up.
Great. Uh, it's been moved in second. Any, uh, more discussion? All in favor of passing warrant, pretty much, or? Very much. Very much. Take one.
So we're, we're saying, uh, we'll go to the first year two. Uh, this is the addition in more years, six, four months.
What?
Where's Miss Frankl's grand?
Oh.
I'm hoping I didn't lose this one for that. So, uh, back in twenty nineteen, I think we had, uh, having one to authorize, uh, the construction of, of the expansion of the fire station. Uh, and the, um, the general scope of the project was to include a meeting room, a day room for EMS staff, a new kitchen area, uh, two bathrooms, uh, you know, a new multiple, um, multiple uses. Uh, we had two, um, uh, what were originally detailed as eating quarters for overnight staff. Uh, in the future, when we get to that point, which someday we will, uh, also storage room and an expansion of the apparatus base, some of the apparatus base for. So we're in, we're sitting in the, in the meeting room area. Uh, behind Carol and Sean, I mean, we can pick and work it out if you'd like. Behind them is the, uh, day room, which is, uh, the area where, um, if you had all call EMS for fire, they would be able to, um, spend some time out of, uh, out of the small quarters.
Yes.
Looking there.
Would be necessary trying.
Uh, I mean, I can walk around a little bit. Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just angle it. There we go.
The feed hole supper next year. Yeah, no.
Oh, God, that's old. I know. I'm holding on.
That's had to be so much more. I was like, what? It's a new addition that everybody is.
Yeah, there was a huge lot of code following. Well, I'm gonna. You know, all the guys, so we keep, the, the code change, that's the standard, that's the group. Bad moving that. We're twelve staff.
Okay, cool.
So we have, uh, you tell me, over here, this is where we have, uh, for the, um, equipment for the, um, uh, telecommunications and, um, HVAC stuff, so a little bit of equipment in here. Like you were. And if you want to tell them about how we are fire rated by the original code. Well, yes, so about three or four. Over there on the. We do have that retail. Hey, you want to, Carol?
Yeah. Kind of be deep. Fast, that's fast. A table looking correct.
Well, uh, who knew that? There you go. Four eighty-eight, seven four. I didn't want to. Place how we keep like. This, this is, uh, we have four each other. Either we all, we all want to use one of those. We have very small marks, wide course, monitor. Good one.
That's what they go for.
Your wind will come back, hopefully, at some point. If they can stack it, and they can stack it, it'll be one they got. And that's, oh, and I, and that's good for their clothes, you know. The mutual aid towns that are closer to us, then win. So it will benefit everyone.
Kitchen was a quick.
Without all of that. Uh, you know, uh. That's what that works, hey, that's about, hey, that's how you see it.
That's still doing. Oh, it's Jason's.
Cool. We're trying to.
Yeah. Yeah, his son does, uh, they, they like this. Can we go in here? Absolutely.
Yeah. Can you even draw the light on?
But there's no apparatus in there.
Yeah, no.
The, the, the stuff that flashes and.
Oh, 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 I heard of.
Uh, we'll be right back.
Fire my little.
Oh, okay.
We have to need a little time.
First of all. I don't, they come in, they kick over, that's what they did to the table.
Well, I blame Eric.
This one on your mind?
I was gonna blame, I was gonna blame the pair of the swat.
You should have had, hey.
Um, yeah, I can do that. Uh, I, I think I wanted to pass along the, uh, email access, uh, broad information.
Yes, it's right.
So, the, um, the, the email, what we're trying to do is basically use the online, uh, org portal. So, if, um, if the simple word, the simplest way to do it is to go to, uh, mail dot refieldmain.org. And, and then username and password, they're all on that sheet. Um, password is similar, is the same as what you have to do, well, the username is different, refield slash, and then your, um, your username.
I love the conference you said is same as the last one. Yeah, that's not really.
It's also on the form, so if you have any questions.
What is refield? So, we gotta have about two or three steps before we get the email out.
Which on the past, um, and you can write it down.
If anybody needs any assistance, we'll let you know, um, the simplest thing is to sort of go online and do it through the, do the, the browser of your choice.
So, we don't have to go in with any programs, we just do that as a URL.
That's right, because you are, unless you want to, you can install, um, uh, through an app, um, I've done that, but it takes a little bit of familiar addiction, but it's worth it. Turn it on. Let's just do it even, so I'm going to.
Great, thank you so much for that. Feel at a five.
Okay, so the first word went on to the, uh, um, emergency.
Okay.
Let's take it away, Lee, right?
Take it away, Lee.
Take it away.
That's why Mike's here.
Take it away, Mike.
Somebody's.
So, Nick, after you just, uh, big training, uh, ran it up, when you had that. Did you, did you come down to that, when you set that up?
It's a training or an exercise?
It was a match, a whole big exercise, kind of. I think so, yeah. We, we had to pull all the stuff out and stuff. That was, you weren't coming in a good one, it was performing, you know, so this is, this is kind of all new to everybody. Up here, so what I kind of thought was, we'll go down for it, the emergency operations plan, and then we get it all right. Basically, it's written pretty broad, according to anything that happened, disaster, uh, we don't say that they come, so we wrote a plan long. Uh, so, we, back, when we did it, it was Dennis. Foley, who would he?
Yes. He'd been working on the plan.
Yes, and, and that was kind of, the plan he came up with was like that thick at the time. And his plan was good, and his plan is still there, but we, it lost a lot of weight. And, and his plan, everything was, uh, uh, every chapter, all the names, you know, and it was pretty well spelled out what was going on. So, some people said to me, I was looking at, same idea as what we've got now, you have your basic plan. And then we have a whole section that has contact information, and I think you changed, I haven't seen that since you changed it. Just to pretty much stay the same, and not naming individuals in the plan itself.
Current, but none named.
It's all me attendances. And that, that just makes it easier, uh, record keeping. We try to, we try to go through it, throw it on the table, so everybody gets it once a year. Some, some of it is we do better than others. It'd be nice to actually have a full exercise at some point, I'd like to, I mean, uh, move towards that way. But when nobody really, really did it, I just thought maybe tonight, instead of, you know, saying, you know, this happened, what are you gonna do? It's kind of hard, you don't even know how that plan is set up, or work, because I thought maybe we'd go over a couple of different, you know, scenarios. Not getting real in depth with it, but just to. We think, we think like a local, it all depends on the disaster, and how much help we're gonna get from outside agents. So, a local disaster, meaning something that is just specific, uh, refield, say, uh, plane crashes, or passengers that crashes for whatever reason, that'd be a pretty well localized event. So, we can pretty much how, we're gonna have Canada D M A, we're gonna have main state D M A, we're gonna have, you know, all these resources available, at a radio call, or at home. A regional disaster, I was, I was thinking after one of the last storms, and we were sitting down, watching the, doing traffic for the trip truck that went in with a telephone pole in it on the corner. Uh, you know, and that got me thinking. That, that was rain, and all of a sudden we started getting freezing rain, and that was a real short, short event. Beautiful rainbow that day, too.
Yes, I remember exactly.
Yeah, they, they were up here, that storm was in the data, so C N P holding, you know, agencies from outside, new people from Illinois.
Was this recent?
Yeah, it was the storm before last, yeah.
Okay.
It was a real wet storm, we had snow, then it started raining.
Great.
But I was clearing out down here, and so the parade was untrapped.
Yep.
And they were just, they'll haul them, but didn't surprise me when it crashed. But as we're sitting there, it, it really started pouring, and luckily the country was great there, but then I got, got thinking about the ice storm of ninety-eight. And so, when that happened, that was a regional event, and everybody around us, same deal. So, and then when that happened, there's not enough people anyways, so you get, oh, I got trees down, all every county got trees down, so then that really sat. That's when that, our plan is really gonna stop coming into its own, as, as us as a town, because we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to deal with it for some time before we get assistance from the outside. Will C N P, given that tree down scenario, will they at least send representatives to the individual fire companies, so that you will know that you can clear stuff, and have grounded crews, or just define lines that are dead, so you can get in there when lines are down, and actually move stuff? Have they committed to do that?
We, we have over the past three or four years, now there's a fall off in that, the, kind of that D M A came up with. So, anytime they open the emergency operations center, there's actually a C N P representative, and the emergency operations, whoever else.
Okay, cool.
And that, that would be easy, because before, they, they got there when they got there, I mean, and just like everybody else, they, and moved miles and miles and miles on. But now, and I worked pretty hard with Sean, could run on that plan, so they've got a representative. So, if we've got roads closed because of the flying tech, they have a crew in an area that just goes out, grounds up.
Grounds it, so you can clean up.
If we've had, we can address the issue and open roads. But then, there's another factor that plays into that, that these huge telephone lines, they can't do nothing with those, right? And I'm like, power wise, when trees come down on them, they generally don't break.
Yeah, they're suspended, it's like.
Yeah, well, so then, then we've got a bottom arrow, but when you start cut, and C N P won't touch it, they call a tree, like the tree club. But our hands are kind of tied at certain, certain junctures on there, it's not just, yeah, there's a tree there, but if we cut it, they kill people, so lots of times, especially tree fakes, I mean, we don't touch it. So, that, this kind of gets it, I mean, the emergency operations plan works either way, but just when it's a, a regional disaster, it's gonna be a lot more so than outside.
Right, so, so it's almost like, the, the, the larger the scale, the more prepared we should be, because then that, those levels of support are routinely out.
Exactly, yeah.
There's, you know, there's a lot of people, and there's a lot, lots of people that do it, but when, when we, when we start talking regional event, then, you know, it's picking up, and then we have to start thinking about. More, you know, places to get warm, um, and, and we'll talk a little bit about that, just get people's brains thinking about what's going on. So, I think about it quite a bit, because I do what I do, and nobody, you know, an old person's not gonna think that, they just, they, they think when something happens, I'm gonna make a phone call, and I'm gonna get help. And that's not always a hundred percent what's gonna happen, so long as they're in order.
They may or may not.
That, that, yeah, they might, or is that, they don't have to tackle on it, or just, you know, the, the way that plan goes, it's off, you know, put in the, put in the play. Like for a physical, so, that's tangible, it's handled, so we're gonna get called, say, say, uh, seven, six, seven crashes up that way, up the middle of the woods. But we're gonna get called, and then I'm gonna get there, I'm gonna say, wow, what is, what is doing that? So, how it's supposed to work is, once that's determined, Eric's probably not gonna get a phone call from me, but he's gonna get a phone call, a month of calm, saying, hey, there's something bad, and what's that, gonna give Eric the information. And then his job is to call you guys, and to make sense, and, you know, depending on where it is, we, we've determined the town office, especially now it's got a generator. It, you know, before it was kind of tough, because it wasn't a generator, it was a farm, but now we've got that, so we've got town office, you gotta generate up, you got like, you got heat, so that's gonna be the emergency operation area. And the deal is, you get in touch with maintenance, maintenance specs, calling out everything, radio, get, get that set up, because there's a base down there with power supply, we can put the, I don't know, uh, out, out the window. You guys have got communication via the app, so we can talk directly to you. So, we'll just say it is a plane crash, passenger flying, tried landing, this, this crashes, we've got dead bodies, crashes, anybody, but they tried to land, so we might have survivors, we get out there, but when that happens, we need to. We, we need to come up with a plan, so by that time, we're gonna have everybody in the world coming to that. Have that D M A, S B C, the F A A, N, N T S B, it's just gonna be, uh, stuff like that, you're gonna have just tools to help. And that helps, because, you know, kind of that D M A, kind of what, I think they call it the I M A team, and what their job is basically, you know, with paperwork built, because when something like that happens, you get, you know, happened in refield. And generally, oh, my God, I'm gonna, oh, the town roof. So, that's where a lot of the stuff gets controlled. I didn't really get Theresa's questions on that, or, because she worked really hard with that blast exercise, but I thought the different colored post-it notes and stuff are. I'm sure they had Theresa color. That being said, so it's record keeping, like, like on emergency, it's record keeping, I can keep it, so when that happens, so you, you, you guys being there at the board, it kind of allows. Probably us to spend more money if they go on it, other, you know, Matt gets him to go around the bend, and, and, uh, real, real savvy about that round of events, so.
It's okay, because he's up in field, that's what, that's what Eric is for, that's right, yeah, he made a role.
And if Eric doesn't know, there's someone else in one of those other organizations that will know.
Yeah.
And will say, this is what you need your people to do.
And so, it just, it works in the team. Essentially, when you get into these types of situations like that, you're gonna spend what you need to spend.
Yeah, I, I don't.
Depending on whether or not governor declared a state of emergency, which you are then entitled to theme a fund, and that's where your record keeping becomes very, very important. Because you don't trust, sand is material, volunteer hours get charged out too, so that's where, that's where somebody like Theresa everything.
And that's where it's, a localized event, the paperwork is just gonna be ridiculous, even with I M A, and that's the whole idea. You guys are having that town office, you know, you're doing, doing a lot of, you know, making sure, blue post-it notes, a number, a yellow post-it note, piled, and it's just, with, you know, with, with. Time in, and obviously, any emergency like that, we're gonna be spending money.
You can't, you can't not know, and have, and that kind of dispersed, and hope that most of it will be reimbursed, but.
And that don't, that's the idea of not spend the money, because you don't have authorized. But I know on certain things, you gotta have you guys approve it, not just, that gives all you guys, all you guys there, so what you remember.
So, and that just comes back, like you do the forest every week, uh, there's no one person in the town who can authorize money, it's at least three of the eleven of them. And so, that's, that's why it's needed, and it's probably on a daily basis, it's not more than once a day.
It keeps, it keeps it very transparent, especially on local, that we don't have everybody look, and we can do that, say, I'm not, um, Andrew Boy, it's small. Are you comfortable having the E O C move the firehouse for this at the town hall, which is a place for Eric and perhaps one or two other town officials right here, which you guys are gonna be to help?
Uh, no, we, and we talked about that, and that was the great thing in getting the generator, because the computer system there, all the files are there, it just, you know, and stuff like that, it just seems. And there's gonna be so much traffic in and out of here, depending, you know, even on a localized.
Keep doing things, not take the work.
As long as you're comfortable with the fact that we can readily and easily communicate you between.
Yeah, and, and that's the idea of having the radio out, and when you get into a big disaster, no matter what it is, it's sad, because there's, there's gonna be numerous commanders, you know, there's gonna be a, a head guy, head incident chairman. But if it's a big, so we might use this as the main command post, like that was a direct start from here, and then we've got the emergency operations center. Now, we're, we're so close, where we can, you know, still do what we need to do here, make, make, do the operations, but there's gonna be, you know, kind of like outpost of command areas, so if a plane crash, this might be the main, main place, staging area, where all that stuff, uh, and direct and rescue. When you get up there, there's gonna be a command post for operations, there's gonna be a E M S command post, and it just, that's when all the NIM stuff that you guys will soon be taking. If you haven't took it, that's where, it kind of makes sense, and that, how things work, because it just, it becomes even a high command, for an overall, so the, a long event, there's gonna be operational periods. So, every time we change to operational periods, and then something that's critical, are they? You know, we'll, we'll set, and we'll say, we're gonna have a new, uh, press briefing, so we'll have to meet people, meeting incident command, and all the, all the commanders, and we'll go to, probably we'll end up going to the town office, meet where they are, to do the public information officer, uh, of the town. It, it works really good.
And that's a key piece, right, along the way training is, there's a spokesperson.
Yeah.
And that way, the message is always clear.
And that's always the same, and what we're doing always comes from, and some things you want, you want a public to know, some things, you know, depending on the situation, that are off.
State police, when Steve McCallum was the spokesman, he was really awesome to work with, and I, I assume probably Shannon Ma, that's doing it now, is just nice to work with. They just, they had all kinds of training on it, so oftentimes, you know, it would be the, the public safety spokesman for the whole state, and Eric, and they come up with, uh, you know, they both can brief what's going on. But it's a clear and concise message as to what's going on. If it's, you know, when C S X takes over the P and M, right now, hazardous material running up, down through refields, not a high priority or worry on my, my left, there's a lot of stuff that's moving up the rail, but. We probably wish that at this point, but I think when C S X buys it, we're gonna run into, there's gonna be a lot more hazardous material coming through, hello, from that, that, that something.
So, the, the team is, I, I'm not aware of what's happening, so P and M is not gonna be.
P and M is someone else, uh, C F F. You probably had to be a fight for P and M, jumping into professional railroad companies, I know the guy who owns P and M and the power. So, that, that's someone else, C S X is a, is a large transportation, and train, so that, they're gonna put a lot of money in the system up here.
Which means they're gonna transport more.
I mean, they're in it to make money, so they're, they're definitely, they're, they're not buying the short line for no reason, there's a reason why, and it goes all the way to Canada. Urban's a big player in P and M, that's a lot, I can hear, we're gonna see a lot of patrolling product from them, I might be wrong, right, right now, biggest thing they haul is folks from all over. Yeah, that, that's the major thing right now, most of the paper mill would adapt, I mean, so they haul a little bit of stories, but not much to be fed. So, that, that's a concern, so we could stack, coming in, uh, you know, more hazardous materials, you know, and that, depending on what it is, evacuation.
A lot of those, a lot of that flying, drugs, this, that, when the areas, and all the places.
The rail lines go all across, just parallel lakes, you know, so you get.
A lot of it's boy, you know, and this is one of the, from the fossil, up through, it's one of the highest grades that the train comes on, and it's the weirdest, that's about it. I forget what, what it raises in all of Asia, it's quite, quite a, quite a big deal, but they'll, they'll actually, it's moving around, so hopefully, but couldn't, it's, the box, yeah. That was another thing, otherwise it would attract a trailer, join the, but, but things are. Unfortunately, bad things happen, okay, we, we seem to have our share of problems, but.
Yeah.
Eric, we can talk, we don't have to discuss it tonight, but we can talk. Eric, we even talked, we don't have to discuss it tonight, but we could talk at some point in the last year or so after the Belgrade tanker incident. That the town actually got stuck with quite a large bill from that because they weren't insured. And I had asked about it, I mean, insured for that, I don't remember all the details. But I know that it's a different type of insurance that we currently have. So I, I play the poker game. The mask has the aspect of it, um, don't want to be on the other side, you want to be on the, the, the land.
We, we want that proactive, it's not the reactive strategy.
Too late. We already lost that.
But I, I know there is something about that, and I know we've talked about, um, we don't charge too big. When we respond to accidents now, which is a lot of what you guys, right, motor vehicle traffic accidents. Um, does any of that get billed to the insurance company of their towns that do that?
Or how that do it, and what I'm seeing around here is that. But my thing is, we're going to charge, we charge everybody, but there's some towns that, well, if you're intoxicated, then we charge you. There's some towns that give out resin and that kind of, we charge you. I'm thinking on how, how to go about it. I suppose that you know that better than anybody. I, I know it would add a lot of, uh, it would add a lot of paperwork. Chasing insurance companies. So it would almost create a, almost a, have a job for somebody, you know. All the, all the chasing insurance companies.
I'm, I'm almost thinking you probably know that maybe the Amsterdam has done that because they're there on two oh two and they respond almost daily.
Yeah.
And it's on the highway, and at some point that just becomes.
Yeah, we don't have highways, so we're blessed.
Oh, we have a highway, that's taller.
We don't have, we don't have any, we, we actually have more.
Really?
Like, wait. But I probably thought that two oh two and a bunch of nuts, you know. That's a lot. It was, it was a nice, nice business and, and people go there, which is awful. But, you know, it seems to be something.
Yes, that, it's, it's.
Well, even when they redesigned that. Station with the Don Quixote, people are still turning from the left lane, cutting in front of traffic to go get a freaking coffee. And, and the white, I've talked to Shenabod, and she's still around, you know, the lights aren't cycle great. You, you can sit there, you're coming out of seventeen, and you count when the red light goes, till the green light goes, under two seconds. And you go to many other intersections, it's three or four, and people run it on some. Really dangerous, but anyway.
So, so, I mean, there's a lot on the backside of who's out there.
There's a philosophy to it too. Do you want to be volunteer or, or do you want to? And I understand a lot of towns are hard to, for revenue, and you want to make sure you're volunteering to take care of it. There's a philosophy involved too.
And I, I guess, I mean, the taxes paid for the fire department, and that's part of your services, whether you're at your house or if you're on the town road or, you know. But I, I don't know what, but I, I know what to do and we get money on it. I'm not sure how I feel.
Well, and then you, then you have the issue of where does that revenue go?
As long as it goes back into the.
Yeah, because you actually know some fire companies might tell them because they're providing service. And the towns are funding the fire companies, it, it's better, to my mind, as, as an individual owner. Not to go down that road, it's a real compelling cost issue.
You know, and, and I get that, this is the whole conversation for, you know, another time like that, but everything's going up. So our, you know, it costs us a lot more than the swamp is. So training costs more.
If you were responding every day to accidents, you're around, that would be a different issue. And then that's where it's our responsibility, because then it's a financial issue. And then it's a burden to the town on budget level, and we have to figure out how to deal with it. So that's the only reason I was bringing that up, where your input, that you need to know, that we'll support what you need when the sign is straight. Well, I hope we would support that.
Oh, I see. Because it's doing us, that, that whole approach to the operation thing, to select workers that provide the services and the support. With all the ground, uh, both needs, that's, that's really a neat, neat connection.
Oh, and if we never talked about these things, then when they come up, we're like, whoa, well, why didn't we get to hear about that?
That, that's one of those, being proactive versus reaction.
Right.
And that, and that's, that, that's why I refill my eggs so good, because we, we think we always have. Then the teacher, you know.
I agree, and I, that's sort of what this board is also, you know, behind, about, in that way.
And I think, you know, all the previous block, it's, it's always thinking about where the council is at. I mean, I don't want to handle it on the block, but that was a lot of what you guys did, so, you know, I think that's, that's awesome, right? Block was always.
How are we set up for like a mass traffic accident where you might need fifteen ambulance? Especially in today's world where we're all covering each other in the house. It's, it's better.
That, that.
Is the E O D N or?
Like on a, you know, and that gets, we'll go back to that localized event, that kind of falls under that. We, we pretty much, every call we go to, we're, we're doing a emergency operation plan, so I, I have to really stop, thank how to plan it. And, and, because it just happens, you know, and you take it for granted, because everybody that does that is on the same page. It's basically emergency operation plan, every time we go to a, go to one of that, that's usually, we're basically walking off of emergency operation. We all have it. Go ahead, Ralph.
Have you, have you practiced recently school evacuation drill with food, so parents have to come pick up students, parents have to travel?
We, during, during business hours when parents might not be home. We, we, we actually, you know, Irish through thirty-eight, that's kind of back DNA.
That's a big deal.
Yeah, no, we, we actually did a drill, and that, it was scheduled for the day when, uh, Sheriff got shot. Oh, Lord. And that, that was the original day, but, I mean, the school is very good at that and how their, their.
They get hold it.
Emergency operator was later, when they did it, but they came from that day, but it finally did go off. So actually, this is all we did, they, they loaded the kids up, and we, and they took them up the, up the canteau on the Alpham. And then they, and then there was a protocol, they had their protocols, they, well, the children up, having to be on the left, and the whole thing. And that really went really good.
And like parents twice, they, and they all knew what was happening on that case, it wasn't a shock to anybody.
Well, we just, if something bad happens, that's going to happen, and then.
I'm thinking.
Vice versa, canteau will go.
Morning or winter.
Twenty nineteen, something before the pandemic.
Before the, and that, it was probably.
It was pretty recent, yeah.
Yeah, oh, but really.
Yeah, it wasn't, wasn't very long. And then they're always working on the emergency operation plan, and I, I definitely give them, you know, they take it very serious, but. They were really hope with kind of that DNA and the guy that specializes in the school, you know. But they, they do a really good job, and they made sure that we knew, when people called us, what's going on at school. We were able to get them that answer, oh, I see, it's happening, and it was, it was well done. Sitting there talking about it, you just, you know, like, oh, who's sitting here talking about it, but to actually get something thrown in front of you. But you know, you know, it works a lot better, and that was the whole point of that. Nobody doing how long it was going to take to get.
It's complicated.
Canteau, yeah. So, it's kind of.
We're scheduled to go until eight, and I just want to make sure everyone is okay with that.
And what time is it?
About five minutes to.
Okay.
I think you want, I make sure that we're all in the, yeah, that's something I have a question for you.
Actually, I have a question, Eric. Um, the school system has a text message that they use to contact parents. To contact what's wrong with students. So we still have a text messaging system to, if residents are being killed?
We don't, uh, we, the best, the best we have is the, uh, email list and, uh, from the website. And so now we don't have a text-based program. And there are access to that, it wouldn't backline it, yeah, but it won't figure out. It is doable. Like, if anything that happened, I wouldn't do it.
It was for emergencies only, but it wasn't.
It, it, no, no, I mean, you could send anyone out.
Into the school, but I'd ask, I'd just two or three a day when you came.
The, the whole, the whole thing was for emergency, but there are companies out there that sign up.
Oh, it should be great, that would be great.
I think that would be, okay, just, everybody has a cell phone, I mean, I know there's a lot of, a lot of early residents that don't have cell phones, or they have the flip, you know, but.
But we have a non-smartphone.
And then there's, there's also a, a brush by one. Right, so a combination of the two.
Well, and they also have neighbors and people who check in on them regularly, and so if those people get some messages, I think we won't be. And, you know, it's a different world that we live in now than we did five years ago, so it's, it's certainly a great idea.
That's a great way to, and then, and generally what we would do is we would have people sign up themselves. So we wouldn't, there'd be, you know, it'd be, it wouldn't be just capturing people.
Well, we kind of have that now with the email.
Little bit, yeah, little bit.
And a universal subscription there would solve the problem, but you can't, you can't lead the horse to the water proverbially.
But not everybody gets their email on their phone too, I think is also part of it, and, and like you said, you know, you know, just. It's, it's that fast, it's, we got to send out a message and they go and they.
Well, and it's, it's helpful for people even in smaller, like you have to shut down, bring a team for thirty hours because of an accident. You can let people know that you need to go with their way.
I think that'd be great, put that down here.
Yeah, no, I did, yeah, like when we hit the fire, it transferred to.
Oh, it would be a great idea.
Because if there were people not coming in and screaming that we were closed, and trying to explain to them that we have a fire, that would be helpful.
Don't put your ashes in the fire, but I think that would be a great idea, I think that's a great part of it. Um, is there anything else, chief, that you would like to view us with?
I, I would, as a park, well, well, where we get a lot of help, you know. I, I think we're probably looking at a major ice storm in that two years, then, you know, twenty-five years, so ninety-eight happened. Because anyone like. That, that was minor. And we, we got a lot of, a lot of growth from the trees, from that, where it's affecting. And then, then we sat, we were just kind of smiling and talking about, stick up world that was five years ago, pack messages and stuff. But funny thing is, if we had a giant ice storm. We're probably not going to have pack messages on a cell phone, because if we get three to three quarters of an inch or an inch of ice on the intended on cell phone. That was not potential to power them, people are going to get in a, so that, that kind of gives the end, uh, it's regional on that. What you guys, you know, what we'd be doing as an emergency operation plan. Trees down everywhere, it's got tough growth, but we're going to be doing a lot of visiting people at the home, just check on them to make sure they're all right.
And we do have a list for that.
We, a special piece. Of, uh, people that want to be contacted and stuff like that, we got.
This would go way beyond that.
Yeah, this, this would go way beyond that. If you can reach them, if you can reach them, you're not going to know, but, you know, it's going to be a, something to do with water, and it's going to cause a big.
Do you like the town divided up into districts? So that.
What?
Or would we have to like design that on the fly?
We, we kind of, we do it on the fly, right along, but we know where, this is like a cross here. And we know where the heavier population is in town, so like when you have giant winds one, or have somebody doing, you know, on the track road. Some that car is a lot, which kind of supports the farm, and we have, so it's kind of like a proppant, you know, a core of history. But then I just start thinking about that, because if you get something bad, you're without power for a week. A minute, or, or three or four weeks, because the ice storm was so bad that we'd down every day. You've got a lot of people now have generators that are going on propane. But if you can't get propane trucks and the other generators, they're only going to run so long. You get about eight days on a three hundred gallon. I, I was thinking maybe if something big happens with refills, that generator is going to go off, be shut off, or, you know, at some time, break the, your hat out. It's going to be a, it's going to be tight. And then, then we have to start thinking about sheltering people. You know, it's cold, a lot of people.
Are there designated forming shelters already now?
What, what we've done in the past, we've opened the town office up, and you guys, cut the, is, with a, during that weird freak storm. It was a couple of years ago, we had, we, we said we got water, we got a place to charge us on, we kind of have to. Um, but, um, but yeah.
Yeah, now we've got the option.
We're working out, which is kind of bad, uh, to warm people up, but if it's bad enough, then we really got to start thinking about, you know. How we, people, how we live.
We named the schools for that, the practice space, you know.
And they, they, they have. Well, if the Red Cross, if the Red Cross acts on us, then we're on, I mean, we, we just really need the, you know, I don't think, I hadn't thought about that. I mean, we've got canteau, they've got a whole, who, depending on where the kids are, the high school, I don't know how much food they keep all the kids down. But anybody bringing in, you know, if something like that happens, I don't know. Well, we're going to bring you, but we'll bring you food that you got too.
Exactly, you know.
Once you set up your center, people can bring the food, it's going to spoil them and. So if we have people out, get people to get somewhere where they are, that's what then we need to be thankful to. We probably got to bring whatever food, you know, and then on top of what we need to do, then we're going to get billed, you know, for everything else. So not on top of, on top of us thought up doing that, because we utilize all the volunteer, you know, people around. The trails, they're there, they're out there, and we've bad enough to support in the town, just in committee, where we'd be able to take all that. The general population can be helpful.
You know, it might not be a bad idea to get some key committee members that are hands-on clearing that sort of stuff. And get them some of the basic training you guys go through in terms of distancing for high power lines, single phase, three phase, all that kind of stuff. So if they, if they get cold on in an emergency situation, they'll know when they can be safe.
Those would be people to put in our little.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought, I was also thinking if we've got doctors, dresses, and tell them, you know, we should be in contact with them.
And vets, vets, that pharmacists.
We, we, we know we got plenty of data, we sweep over assets. Well, I was just, you know, thinking about that, you know, what else, and something like that's going to happen, doesn't matter.
I know it's a bad idea.
I, I don't like to live in the, you know, the end of the, end of the world part, but seeing the, seeing the weather.
We should have a worst case scenario out there for what we think would be a comet storm, and I think the ice storm that you say is.
And I think, and it's going to take a while to actually, they have roads.
Well, yeah.
And then, then we're going to get stopped there. And, you know, we need a nimble, we, we get, we get a, a Christmas, it can help too, you know.
They were pretty good about getting the National Guard out, they came on like the Thursday.
The one thing I use, just one, I had a question. It did call for a, a mobile P A. Do any of our transfer equipment have old?
They said they're all P A's. Well, we had that, a battery.
I just wanted to check, I, I, I had a.
Yeah, I heard one. Come on, white, white wants a water war.
Oh, yeah, please, I've never had a microphone that is loud.
You know, that, and sometimes that, that might not be a bad idea to have one of them hanging around. And if, if we put a lot of people, and have them in the school, in the gym or something, okay, you got two of them, people. Then you got COVID, but then you got to have two places, you got. Then you got COVID, so then you gotta have two places. You got COVID, oh, you're going, you're going to this part, you know, so it's just. There there's a lot of things that we have to think about. Just because it's hard, y'all, the people, we need y'all, the people here. Like, if we're doing, we try to go on a garden, and you can't, you know, there's a hundred people in there, and you couldn't hold them out.
You guys were out there when we were just standing there.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're already, you're being around.
You can add up with a lot of people. And you go through.
And that's what I was pointing at.
That problem is, if there's somebody who wants private food, some of them are not gonna get you, but better than nothing. I just think, you can't help it. That way, if you've got a whole lot of people in the gym, you'll be.
Right, okay.
They they don't have it done right enough, so it's what, how is it gonna be? This is last night.
With all that money, so.
I I know, they, you know, there was talk of that. They might have one now. So my last dollar is no better.
Probably calling after. Well, it may be something that they were able to buy with all the first month that they've been getting.
Lots of times, if you know something, the government, kind of that DNA has generated available.
Maybe corona.
Or wheels, and lots of times, one just appears up here, something that, yeah, I want one. Maybe on the off chance that we have to open up. But right, you know, with that storm the other day, I'm like, well, that's all. Great, and we'll get that. But just something, thank you.
Hello, my best guess is the municipality is a world partner.
Well, here's where, here's where the municipal partnership works out, you could maybe piggyback that and look for grant money to put it in there because now it's a shelter place.
Well, that's.
And and there you have a legitimate application for funds, but they're generally pretty competitive, if I recall.
And I know a lot of the problem up there, the three phases, where, where that's gonna cost a lot.
Yeah, three phases, spenders play.
Well, that's what they did in Franklin County. They made the high school an emergency shelters nation. And then together, they put a gigantic generator in. And it is, well, they can't.
It's not a bad thing to think about.
It's a good, it's a good thing to do.
We we've thought about having them, you know, somehow get that wired up. And then just having a one of the.
Yeah, and then you can plug it in.
Plug it up. If it's not there, whatever happens in Bay, they have to do it. We go down to the central school and plug into that. So there's, we've always talked about stuff like that after, but it's just, I think. I think by the time any of that gets into the actual funding, really happening, I think we're gonna have another major, you know, something major has to come, uh, do like.
You have a generator here, right? It runs all over.
Well, friends, uh, I feel better off in knowing more about the first operation plan, what the select board hall is, uh, and how we all are a part of helping all of everything. Lee, thank you very much. I thank you very much. Uh, anybody else? Oh, yeah, he's got, he looks dead at Andy. I would, uh, take a motion with her.
Motion to her.
It's good movement, sending with her, all in favor.
Now, Mr. Town Manager, we already have to do an emergency work. We're already, we're next to you.
I know, right? Love having something. I think you ought to send it home with him.
Make you laugh every now.
You know something?
Oh, buddy.